...board commissioners' work session. Today's Thursday, July 18, 2019. We appreciate your attendance. We'll move right into new business. First up, we have presentation of results of FY 2018 external audit. CPA Christie Griffin with Bates &amp; Carter.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherman and all the commissioners. We appreciate you letting us come today to give these audit results. First off, great news. So we'll get this done for a couple of minutes on the way. Independent auditors report. This is the most important piece in our entire large financial statement that you've hopefully gotten a copy of and flipped through. There's three main tenets that I wanted to take just a minute to talk about. The Dawson County responsibilities, and that is that the financial statements hold the responsibility of Dawson County management. Now, we do assist with the presentation of these financial statements, but the ultimate responsibility lies with county management. Our responsibilities as auditors is to express an opinion on the fair presentation of those financial statements. And of course, it's with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, also governmental auditing standards. And I'm pleased to let you know that we have issued an unmodified opinion on these financial statements. So based on our audits and the report of other auditors, which we'll talk about in just a second, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Dawson County as of December 31, 2018, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, your cash flows for the year's end ended. So what is included in these financial statements? Well, it's everything that the county does. We're talking all departments, all funds, all elected officials. And we take all of this information that's in all of those different areas and group them into the different categories you see on this slide under the government-wide financial statements. So we've got our governmental activities, primarily supported by your taxes and intragovernmental revenues, your business activities, which are primarily funded by your user fees and charges, and then we have component units. And those are legally separate entities for which the county is still financially accountable. Now, we did audit, we have already audited and issued unmodified opinions on both the Development Authority and the Industrial Development Authority. And those financials are included in the component unit column. We did not audit the Health Department. It was audited by other auditors as of June 30, and we have issued our report based on their audit. And it was again an unmodified opinion as well. Well, spend just a moment talking about the general fund. Obviously, that's the biggest fund and where most of the activity is going on. General fund revenues for the year ended December 31 of $27,261,000 was a 15% increase from prior year. That was also a little bit of an increase from your budget. Where that primarily came from, those increases primarily came from, your property taxes increased about $2 million. Sales tax increased about $591,000, and your insurance premium tax increased about $91,000. On the expenditures side, they increased as well, about 13%, $2.9 million increase, for a total of $25,868,998. And again, there was no real major increase anywhere. It was just kind of a fluctuation in line with where your revenue growth was. Some of the areas that did increase that we noted was transfers to other funds. Those are included in your expenditures of $570,000 increase over the prior year. Salaries and benefits for the county as a whole increased $833,000. This really was a 2% cost of living raise, and there were some higher pay rates that had been based on a new salary study, and also nine new firefighters. Your tax assessor department increased $253,000. That was primarily due to some revaluations of properties in the agricultural and residential areas. Fire capital outlay increased about $449,000, and that was due to a purchase of your fire pumper truck through a capital lease. We'll see that again in just a moment. So overall, the result to the general fund was extremely positive, adding nearly $1.4 million to the general fund balance, raising your general fund balance to $9,625,735. $8.2 million of that is unassigned. So that's a really strong position, and we'll talk about that in just a minute, a little bit more on the unassigned portion. The ratio of revenues to expenditures, general fund, again, over a five-year period. I think it's always good to kind of take a look back and see where you were and see where you're headed. 2014, your revenues and expenditures were just under $20 million. It was pretty much a break-even year in 2014. 2019, as I mentioned, revenues were just over $27 million, expenses just under $26 million. And that represents a 37% increase in revenue from 2014, 29% increase on your expenses. During that same time, your population growth, according to the U.S. Bureau of Census, was about 9.3%. Obviously, hopefully, when your population grows, your tax digest is going to grow as well, and it did. But your mileage rate has stayed consistent at 8.138 for that same time period. Over that same time period, your fund balance has increased from $5.2 million in 2014 to $9.6 million in 2018. So again, good solid growth over that five-year period. As I mentioned earlier about the unassigned balance and why that's important, one of the things that you look at, kind of look at the health of a county is, you know, what's the percentage of the unreserved fund balance to your total fund expenditures? It's a good indication of liquidity. The GFOA Association recommends between 15 and 25%, which is about two to three months of expenditures. As you'll see on this slide, the county has been well in that range for the total of the five-year period and has in fact exceeded that the last two years. Another way to look at that is how many months of general fund expenditures are included in that unreserved fund balance? In 2018, we were looking at about 4.1 months of general fund expenditures included in that unsigned balance, and in 2017, it was about 3.3 months. So again, another good sign of, you know, gradually growing that fund balance because you really want to save really for either planned expenditures that you want to meet over the next few years or unplanned things that you just don't know are going to be coming down. Those are just things we just don't know. Kind of want to make sure you have a good savings account for a rainy day. Your long-term debt, not a whole lot, and that's another positive aspect that the county can talk about is there's not a whole lot of debt. Since 2014, or actually in 2015, your Series 2007 general obligation bonds were matured. So since that time, you had really just one other main bond payable out there, and it relates to the Etowah Water and Sewer Card, or the expansion debt. That sits at $2.85 million as of December 31, 2018. It carries interest at 2.96% interest, and it matures in 2027. This year, we did add another amount to your long-term debt in the form of a capital lease related to that fire pumper truck that was purchased of $449,000, interest of 2.91%. matures in 2025. One thing we do is kind of look to see, okay, well, other counties of similar size, what does their general obligation debt look like? So we did a little research, and what we came up with was the average general obligation debt of similar-sized counties is about $8.6 million, and we're looking at Dawson County at 3.3. So another strong indicator of a fiscally strong and responsible and conservative government. Moving outside of your general fund, we'll talk a minute about SWAAS. Collections for SWAAS was $8.5 million. And again, that's not just from, that's obviously not just from your residents, from everybody that's come in to the county to spend money. About 8.5% increase over the prior year. $3.8 million were spent from SWAAS. Some of the primary areas where that expenditures were, there were shared vehicles. I think there was 18 new vehicles purchased in the shares department. There was a land for a new fire station, and it was construction of a new pool house. Cash balances at December 31, that should say 2018 instead of 2019, I'm calling it as I was looking over this again, is $9.3 million. And that money is set aside for capital outlay purchases in the future. The two other funds, as I mentioned, on the business type side, Solid Waste and the Geographical Information System. These funds kind of are differentiated from those governmental-type funds because they're funded by user fees to some extent and charges. Your Solid Waste had operating revenues this year of $826,000, expenses of $590,000, resulting in that operating income of $236,000, and that was a decrease from the prior year of $136,000. Now, part of those expenditures includes depreciation costs of $56,000. One item that's on the balance sheet that we just kind of like to keep a tad of on and make sure, just be aware of, is that landfill post-closure liability balance of $782,000. And this balance represents anticipated costs to maintain the landfill in the future. And that's something that may fluctuate because obviously your costs are rising, and that's something that we analyze on a pretty regular basis. Your GIS had operating revenues of $14,000, so that's not a ton of income coming in. Expenditures of about $68,000, including primarily salaries and contracted services, for an operating loss of $52,000 in that fund that included a transfer, or excuse me, did not include a transfer, it allowed for a transfer from the general fund of $88,000. One of the last items is this net pension liability. As of 12/31/1818 was $276,000. That was a decrease from 2017 of $521,000, mainly due to market growth of the funded investments. And just wanted to highlight this because what this relates to is the pension plan that the county had, and it's been frozen since 2007. But there's still liabilities out there, obviously, for retirees now, and those retirees that were in the plan before it was frozen, you know, they've got this liability out there to fund. Your total pension liability is a little over $6.2 million, right? At $6.3 million. Your investments to cover that liability is right at $6 million, leaving that net pension liability of $276,000. That means that you're funded about 96% in the current year. Last year, that funding was about 87%. Not a terrible place to be. You're kind of, you're right there in line, but that's just something that may fluctuate with your markets and also your employer contributions because that is something that is a recommended contribution by your actuary every year. Just looking ahead, because we've always got to think about the future, we can't always look in the past, is, you know, what are some changes that are going to be happening? And across the board, GAZB, our Governmental Accounting Standards Board, is always looking for changing things and how things get included in financials and what might be a better thing that users of the financial statements need. So these five things that I've listed here are just some new pronouncements that are going to be coming down the road, that we're going to be looking at as they come onboard for the county. We've got three that will be coming onboard in 2019. The first one of GAZB 83 relates to retirement obligations, and that is going to specifically relate to the landfill liability. We're just going to take a look at it and see if that's going to have a major impact. All of these new reporting changes, we don't anticipate there being a major change to the county, but we will be looking at them. In 2019, another, GAZB 88 relates to debt. Again, county doesn't have a significant amount of debt, so we don't anticipate huge changes there. The last one that we'll be considering in 2019 relates to primarily component units and how they're represented. And again, don't expect there to be a huge change, but there could be possibly a few little things that we have to tweak to be in compliance with these new rules. Leases, related to leases, that's a big change that's coming in 2020. And in the past, it used to be differentiated between operating leases and capital leases, and now we're just looking at leases in general. So that could be a change. You don't have a ton of leases, don't expect there to be a big change, but that is something we will be looking at. The last one that comes onboard in 2021 relates to conduit debt. The county does not have any conduit debt as of now. The Development Authority does, and that's something that we'll be looking at and making sure that that's getting properly recorded and disclosed in the notes. So those are things that we'll be looking at. Like I said, a couple of these changes are going to impact in 19, and as we need to, we'll be talking with Ms. Nyker and making sure that if there's things that need to be disclosed, we'll be disclosing those properly. It's been a pleasure to work with Ms. Nyker and her team, her staff, that have helped us tremendously in putting this audit together. Really a very good, strong report. We have no negative points that we need to bring up. We have enjoyed working with you all and look forward to that in the future. And if you have any questions, just go ahead.
Questions of Ms. Griffin. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky and your staff, for a good job. Next up, we have presentation of Highway 53 Quarter Overlay from Long Range Planning Committee, planning and development director Jameson Kinsley.
Thank you, Chairman. This board is not unfamiliar with the Highway 53 Quarter Overlay. The history on this document is, really starts back in 2005, in which we did, we had a document here that was not adopted, but nonetheless, we had a corridor study of State Route 53. In 2016, it was, a committee was created and was tasked with looking over this study and presented to the board, and it was approved for $46,000 over three phases over three years. $5,500, approximately $5,500 was spent on this corridor study until it was terminated. And then this year, the Long Range Planning Committee was tasked with reviewing the study, really trying to reamp and re-kick this off. So what we did was we used what we already had to, back to where I was, to create this document. And this document, what this document has is, it's basically, it talks about the location from the Forsyth County Line to Dawsonville, and that's the area 53 that we're concerned with. We talked about three different phases in the Long Range Planning Committee. We talked about going from the Forsyth County Line to the 400 corridor and how that is really almost our lake community, and we talked about the lake field in that community. Exiting the 400 corridor at the top of Gober Hill, really to Etowah River Road, we talked about having a second field of more of the river community and how we wanted to see the river stones used in more of the facades. And we talked about moving along from that really into Dawsonville and having that, seeing that transition in to, in the field to the city of Dawsonville and what that would look like. We talked about everything from facades to sidewalks. We emphasized interconnectivity and the feel of Dawson. It's important to note that the Long Range Planning Committee spent a lot of time working on this, and both the Long Range Planning Committee and the planning department feels like this is something that is important to move forward in Dawson County. What we're, what I'm presenting to you tonight was is a request really to move forward with an RFP to see, to try to put a price tag on it. We have a general idea of what it costs for, but we have all of these documents that we want to build on and to create a corridor overlay like we had with 400 to protect what the feel of Dawson County. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jameson.
So the cost, we've already spent, we spent $5,500. What was the total cost on it?
We spent $5,520 before the contract was terminated.
If I remember correctly, we were going to look at this internally, doing it in-house at that particular time?
We did. We did, under that director, we did say that we would do it in-house. As it turns out, we really don't have the staff capabilities now to do that in-house, so looking to outsource that would be the best option for our citizens.
Chairman, I might add to that for a second. You're correct in saying that there was an internal look at that. However, that was also brought to the Long Range Planning Committee's attention to, we didn't have the ability to do that in-house. By looking at it, it was just a much larger project, so I just wanted to inform the board that that decision was made to go ahead and have the Long Range Planning Committee take a look at that as well as our staff, and that was the outcome of that discussion.
I think I read somewhere where the next logical step is to also, for the Long Range Planning Committee, was to identify and review the overlay on 400, which I assume would also take a third-party vendor to look at. Is there cost savings or an advantage if we do these concurrently in order to make sure that we're speaking on the same page and we're getting the most efficient value out of a contract that we might engage in with the three of them?
I don't have an answer for you right now, but I'll definitely look into that.
Is that an accurate statement that the next logical step, and that might be Terry's question, you know, question for Terry, that I think the goal is to look at the 400, and it hasn't been reviewed in some time, and so...
Yeah, it's about 19 years old.
Yes, I would like to see, for the effort that they're putting into the 400 overlay, let's see if it makes sense to concurrently look at these with a third party if we're going down that path.
And we could get an alternate cost on that when we bid this out. And you're correct in saying, I believe that the cost of that review would be much less than this based on the fact that there has been a baseline established.
Right.
And there isn't as much obvious work that needs to be done other than some modifying to current standards and that kind of thing.
And I would assume that whoever's doing this, the goal, I think, is to feather 53, we've got the 400 overlay, but to feather that as you go down that corridor east-west. So whoever's doing the 53, still got to revert back and look at what the 400 overlay is. So to me, that makes sense.
Yes, sir. And we're trying to utilize every document that we already have to alleviate as much cost as possible.
Other questions for Jameson. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have presentation of fee schedule update. Jameson, you're doing that, too?
Thank you, Chairman. So it's important to start this conversation off with that we haven't updated RFPs since Before you, I am presenting to you in your packet, you have the analysis and the options that we have. I'm presenting two options to you to try to get us more in line with our fees with the surrounding counties. Option one, and I'm just going to try to start off with the bottom line, option one would increase $518,133, and option two would increase $681,963. Now, those numbers would be on top of what we already collected. Those are based on 2018 numbers and increased that much on 2018 numbers to get more in line with the surrounding counties. Our business licenses, there we go. To start, we're suggesting a 25 increase to the administrative fee on all licenses. The idea for this is to have a least amount effect on home-based businesses and bring their licenses from $75 to $100. As you'll know, that our home-based businesses are our people, that we're not trying to increase costs to our home businesses as much as we are our commercial businesses. But nonetheless, we are trying to come more in line. Our review fees is important to point out because currently we just charge the $200 standard fee and then additional $10 for every thousand square feet right now. What we'd like to see at that do is incrementally get more after, when they come back for a second review and a third review and a fourth review, because what this is doing is taking us, it's taken our staff more time to look at these. We've got to go back through every time they make a change. We've got to make sure they didn't change anything else, trying to keep everyone as honest as possible.
And a quick question, stop you there. So if they're giving you everything you need on the first review, they don't read it on the third and fourth, so there's an incentive there for them to get it right, to be efficient for our uses as well?
Absolutely. And that allows the engineers, it tells them, hey, listen, we don't want you to copy paste from the previous thing. A lot of times, it's as simple as saying, hey, you have the wrong county record office. You know, it's Dawson County, you're not in, or you're not in the Dawsonville city limits. And a lot of things can be, when we sit down in our first review, they can be fixed and resubmitted, and we'll sign off on them. It's the process that gets drawn out, and then we have to come back and more and more time again. And we would like to see an increase to that, and that's also echoed in all the surroundings. They always have a progressive review fee. Our penalties. So we are starting to write more and more stop-work citations and reinspection fees. What we would like to see is that fee, the reinspection fee go from $30 to $50, and the stop-work order processing fee go from $100 to $200. Basically, you know, the more money you hit them in the pocket with, the less likely they're going to do it again. And our, but to reiterate, our first reaction is always to try to bring them into compliance instead of resulting in these. Our permitting fees. So this is the large ticket item. We're suggesting to increase commercial fees at a higher square footage fee than residential. Obviously, we want to make sure that the commercial is a little higher. Since there's more inspections involved in the commercials, and we will also see mechanical prices show this trend as well. With that said, the state of Georgia is no longer has a minimum requirement for agriculture, and it's left up to each jurisdiction. This is something that, a major change that's happened since 2001 when this was adopted. We are suggesting that the charge be set at maximum $400 for building plus all the mechanicals, which includes all those inspections. Commercial tenant changes, we're recommending to go from $150 to $250. In conclusion, should we choose to move forward with either one of these, either one of these options, we will have to update three documents. We'll have to update the fee schedule itself, we'll have to update our business license ordinance, and our land use resolutions, which all these fees are scattered out. What my suggestion is, is to pull these fees out of each one of these documents and have a single fee schedule with everything in it. That way, if we ever choose to increase or decrease these fees in the future, we can update one document as opposed to trying to update every single fee. This will require, an update of these fees will require two public hearings, and then we will probably try to roll these out progressively over a couple of months. That way, we don't overload my staff, and a lot of changes are out with that, and we don't, you know, we have to deal with phone calls afterwards and stuff. Also, the graduated induction of these fees would allow us our NEDF system to be updated because it is an old system, and it would really dramatically help us out with that. I'm going to answer any questions.
Questions for Jameson.
I mean, just zooming out, effectively, you know, almost 20 years ago was the last thing that we could look at. So I don't think any of us up here are interested in raising taxes or fees on anybody just randomly, but this brings them in line with our communities around us. It's not absorbently charging for anything that you found in your review, so it is keeping it in line with our neighbors, North and South.
Yes, sir. You can see just by the numbers, I think they kind of speak for themselves how far below the standards of everybody else is.
And from a budgetary standpoint, my understanding, this would go with, the fees go into general funds, which then allow us to utilize that for other needs.
Absolutely.
For the organization.
Absolutely. Just want to confirm.
Does that go through the DCA also?
No, sir.
Fees don't, no ordinances and things like that do, but...
I would have to check on that. I apologize, I don't know.
No, no. They won't give you, a lot of times, they won't give you a yes or no, or most times you get a no comment. I don't know, it's just sometimes it's good to send it to them.
We get that.
No comment. At least they looked at it, because I know a lot of builders and contractors go to DCA.
There are definitely maximums, absolutely. There are definitely maximums that they have, and I, from my understanding, we're well below the maximum on a lot of these things. But I'll definitely look into that, and I'll have an answer for you.
Other questions?
I have a question. Last year in May, somebody may help me with these dates, we, this is about the Fire Department. We were working on new fees for the Fire Department. We were working on those fees in May. Lynn Fry was working on that, and it never got finished, and it had already been sitting on the table at least a year, maybe hopefully less than a year before, and then we were working on it. Did we ever get that, we passed it, but did we ever get that... Did we ever get that, we passed it, but did we ever get that implemented? Who can answer that question?
Chief.
Come on up.
Come on, chief.
I just, I don't know where it is.
We just were in contact with your art, I believe, two weeks ago, the final draft proposed on that sent for us for a final review, course presented to be approved.
Final draft?
Final draft, yes. So revisions made over the course of the last six months.
Okay, well, I just want to make a comment. We were working on that last year in two thousand eighteen in May. And then I don't know how long it was before we were even working on it, but there's something wrong here. And I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying there's something wrong here that we passed something and then it takes us that long to get it implemented. And I can't imagine all the money we've lost, so.
I believe we've had a total change in administration in the department during that timeframe as well. Possibly that could be carryover as to not carry orders incurred.
Well, that's been a whole year because he came on board in May. That's been a whole year, so I'm just saying, let's step it up here.
Is there a big change, excuse me, Jeff, is, is there a big change that you noticed from?
Not as big as once proposed on the plan.
I mean, most of it was permit, permit type, special permits?
Fireworks, fireworks, plastic permits. Our specialties were unchanged as far as the hundred dollar per ten changes COs.
Yeah, but we know a lot changed.
No, we didn't.
And a lot of stuff that, that was on there, it was in case the state couldn't do, the state was responsible for the blasting, fireworks and things like that, but if the state couldn't do it, we would step in and do it and we would be in line with what the state was charging.
That's correct. We were monitoring ours off the state's most recent.
So we didn't lose a lot of money because we don't, we don't do those inspections anyway unless the state can do them.
Correct.
Okay.
And then I guess what I'm saying is Jameson, step it up. Get it done.
I'll, I'll, I'll see to it that this, that we move forward in a timely manner.
Other questions for Jameson? Thanks, sir. Next up, we have presentation of board appointment, library board, David Jordan replacing Wendy Bach, term August two thousand nineteen through June two thousand twenty. Present that to you for your consideration at our next voting session in a couple of weeks. Any other information needed on that? All right, county manager report.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, a key indicator reports for June are in your packets. Also, on the back page where we list the contracts and all that we discussed before would be added to the key indicator reports, if you notice on the, the last item there, there's a cost in there which I was signed off on was two hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That was part of a overall project approved by the VOC previously through SPOS six, which back in June the sixth, I believe, Mr. McKee had brought to the attention having to do with the gymnasium flooring and that kind of a thing that was there and approved. So I'm just bringing that to your attention so we see that you don't feel unsignable on that. So anyway, following that, your lost in SPOS collections are up seven point seven percent, eight point nine eight percent for the year-to-date. Those figures are listed on your report as well. We're also, we're proud to host a groundbreaking earlier this afternoon for the new senior center, which you all were part of. We had a good turnout, appreciate all the support and look forward to the opening of the new center in October two thousand twenty. One thing that wasn't brought up there, other than just a general recognition, was the staff input. This has been an extremely challenging project. I want to commend our staff for their due diligence in, in bringing this to fruition. So I do want to just recognize them. It, it, it was a, it has been a long process and, and in that, with some other combining issues that, that have had and taken place. So it's going to be a good project, looking forward to it. Commend the staff for, for their work in this. Next, we, we'll be hosting a grand reopening and ribbon cutting for the Lloyd Crane Center at Veterans Memorial. We hope you will join us and we also invite the community to come out and see the renovations to the gym. That event will begin at four PM on Wednesday, July the twenty-fourth. That's four PM on Wednesday, July the twenty-fourth. I also like to update you on a couple of items. We're getting underway with the management advisory group on the salary study, which you all approved earlier this month. I, along with the department heads, will meet with the company at the end of this month and we have employee sessions scheduled for mid-August. We hope the study moves quickly following the sessions. Staff has been countless of hours updating their employee job description, spreadsheets, updating employee records to help speed this process along. They've done a fantastic job and it has been relayed back from the contractor, appreciating their support to get this effort underway. We also are close to completing a first draft on the revised employee handbook and anticipate taking that to the county attorney for review in mid-August. Following that review, we look forward to bringing it before you all. I'd like to thank again our HR department and the members of the handbook committee who come from departments across the county for their diligent and thoughtful work on this project over the past several months. I applaud the, the team members' efforts. This was not just a management review. It was compiled of several different departments and employees and all, and we're looking for really a total revamp of this employee handbook. I think the HR department had looked at this and I believe it's going to be a little bit different. And what I mean by that is that it's been broken out into three different sections that affect different regulations, such as the legal side, what that entails, so you don't have to dissect it out of the different sections. It's all in one area, what constitutional officers in, in there is, and then of course, under administration. So I think you'll find it a really unique way of viewing it and we're excited about it going forward. Finally, the budget meeting with our finance department is underway, which you've heard a little bit about that today. I know our department heads are looking forward to the upcoming public budget hearings with, with you and, and that will begin on August the sixth. And I believe that's through my report.
Questions of the county manager. Thank you, sir. County attorney.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, um, let me back off this a little bit. Just want, I don't have a report to give tonight, but I would just say it's, it's good to be at Dawson County and I get to cover about seven different counties and this is a particularly good one to cover, so thank you for having me.
Questions of the county attorney. Okay, we have no executive session today, so we can stand adjourned until our six o'clock meeting. Thank you for your attention.